Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 7th Vineland Board of Education combined meeting. Roll call please, Mr. Merkley.
Ms. Acosta.
Here.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Here.
Mr. Medio.
Here.
Mr. Sabrana.
Here.
Mr. Silva.
Here.
Ms. Spinelli.
Here.
Mr. Ulrich.
Present.
Mr. English.
Here.
We have a call.
And the sound system sounds good?
Yeah.
All right. Keep your fingers crossed. There we go. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vineland Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be posted to the meeting to be sent to the following announcing the time and place thereof, agenda, et cetera. The Daily Journal, SNJ Today, the Press of Atlantic City, Nuextra Comunidad, Vista Bueno, the Clerk of the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. At this time, can we please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under ally, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Unfortunately, once again, our nation mourns horrific attacks in El Paso, Texas, and Dayton, Ohio, as that we have a moment of silence out of respect for all those who have tragically died.
Thank you. Do we have a motion or do we have a resolution for executive session this evening?
No.
That's a good sign. That's a good sign. At this time, special presentations.
Yes, Mr. English. This time, we have a special presentation by Mrs. Donna Custard, President of New Jersey Chamber of Commerce in recognition of Vineland High School Jobs for America's graduate program.
Thank you, Ms. Custard.
Thank you. As I was preparing my comments for this evening, I discovered that what I was preparing was probably going to be a little difficult to follow, so I've made copies of my cheat sheet for the Board of Education. I don't know who I need to give them to, but I have plenty of copies for everyone. I have extras if you need them. So first off, I'd like to thank the Board of Education, Mr. Frye, Mr. Frangipani, Principal Di Marchi, for your support of the Jobs for New Jersey's graduates program in Vineland High School. We are here tonight to honor Mr. Bob Rush and his work with the program. We'd also like to thank Ms. Dominic Hyder for her support of the program. She's heavily involved in a summer internship with the JAG students this year, and she is taking on the biggest load for the entire state. We had 21 individuals participating in that paid internship program, and she is in charge of 13 of them. We are paying those students for their service in the internship. We're also providing them with some transportation. So what I wanted to call your attention to tonight is the highest honor that can be bestowed on a cohort for Jobs for America's graduates. If you're all familiar with the program, for those of you who are not, it's the nation's premier dropout prevention program. The highest award is called Five of Five, and in order to be eligible, you must meet or exceed five benchmarks that are set forth by the National Office. They are listed on the document in front of you. The standard for graduation rate is 90 percent. The cohort that Bob Rush was in charge of for the graduating class of 2018 had a graduation rate of 97.78 percent. He had 50 JAG students, the most in the entire state. Forty-five of those were seniors. The employment rate, which is the percentage of students in civilian jobs or military service, the benchmark rate is 60 percent. Bob achieved 68.18. Positive outcomes are the percentage of students who are actively employed in military service or pursuing post-secondary education. The standard is 80 percent. Bob achieved 86.36 percent in full-time employment. Those are the graduates who are working in military service full-time or in the private sector full-time. The standard is 60 percent. Bob achieved 86.67 percent. And for full-time placement, that is the percentage of students who are either working full-time, going to post-secondary education full-time, or a combination of work and post-secondary education for a total of 40 hours per week. The standard is 80 percent. Bob achieved 90 percent. So he did exceed the Five of Five benchmark data, and I draw your attention to the top half of this page because I think it's very notable to indicate the student population that we were working with. It's very easy to cream off the top of the class. It's far more difficult when you start looking at your subgroup population. I did a comparison of Vineland and Jobs for New Jersey's graduates enrollment for your class of 2018, because we follow the kids for 12 months, so we're looking at 2018 data. You had 635 seniors. Forty-five of those were enrolled in JAG. We have the breakdown of males to females. For the school, 62 percent of that class was economically disadvantaged. 100 percent were economically disadvantaged in the JAG cohort. You had 23 percent of your students with disabilities in the entire school. JAG had 46 percent. Now we have demographic breakdown as well. If you look at your adjusted cohort graduation rate for the class of 2018, overall, the school graduated 82 and a half percent of your students. Bob graduated 97.78. And if you look down, the three most challenging subgroup populations in your district would be economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities, and your Hispanic population. If you further look at your African-American and white populations compared to the JAG students, we outgraduated every single population in Vineland High School. And again, it's easy if you take from the top. JAG draws from the bottom academic quartile. We look at students that have significant barriers to success. They have to have at least five out of 37 barriers in order to be eligible for the program. The average number of barriers for the class of 2018 was 9.96, almost double what's required. So I would like to commend Mr. Robert Rush for his work with the JAG program. He's entering his third year with the program. He's done an outstanding job. He did achieve the national award of Five of Five. So, Mr. Rush, if you could come up here and join me so I could give you your award for Five of Five. Thank you. In addition, we have a recognition award. If Principal Di Marchi could come up here, this is for Vineland High School. I hope that you will post it in a location of high traffic and high visibility to mark this tremendous achievement. So thank you very much for your support of the program, and congratulations. And thank you very much. Oh, we have something else.
We want to recognize and thank you, because you know, like you say, you start from the bond, and you guys have done some outstanding work. So congratulations, and thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So we have Ms. Hyder, Mr. Rush, and can I have one picture?
Yep.
Please.
I have to make one shameless plug. Seeing as how Bob has proven himself with this program, I would humbly ask the Board to consider for the 2020-2021 academic year expansion to other cohorts. We've proven that we can work with your student population with a tremendous rate of success. Just something to consider as you plan your next academic year. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank the Board for allowing us to give Bob and the high school these commendations. When this program was started about three years ago, then Senator Van Drew, myself, and Assemblyman Andrews Act were invited to the first installation of the kids, the installation of the officers. We've been trying to attend it every year since and any other things that they've had. It's a great program. We know not all the kids can go to college when they get out of school, so having jobs prepared for them is a great thing, and we really appreciate what Bob and the school and Mr. Di Marchi are doing.
It is good to be here. As much as we run around, anytime we get to celebrate one of our educators and the accomplishments that they do for our students, this is a big deal. It's a big deal for us. It's a big deal for the City of Island. Apparently, it's a big deal for the state of New Jersey as well, as Bob not only educates the students, but he's also a mentor, and he's a friend to them, and it's someone that they can trust in their future for someone to guide them. Bob, you've done a great job. Congratulations. God bless you for all you do. And to the Board, thank you for your foresight, the continuum of programs like this, just so these kids do have avenues and other places to go, and the great guidance that you show. Thank you for your support as well. And we have a presentation we want to do as well. These are commendations on behalf of state New Jersey to represent close to 9 million people in the state of New Jersey saying, "Bob, job well done. Congratulations."
Thank you, guys. Thank you, and congratulations. Do we have any other special presentations this evening, Mr. Frye?
No, Mr. English.
At this time, do we have a motion for the approval of minutes July 10th, 2019, executive session, July 10th, 2019, combined meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta.
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Yes.
Mr. Medio.
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva.
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli.
I abstained.
Mr. Ulrich.
Yes, except for the part on the executive where UAW vote occurred.
Mr. English.
Yes, to all, except for the same with the UAW.
That passes. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, this is the part where we look for any comments from our board solicitor, and just a couple of things. I had asked Mr. DeSanto to address this evening. Sometimes in districts our size, in any district, it's real hard. It's easy sometimes to do the wrong thing, and sometimes it's not so easy to do the right thing. And over the past few years, we've had a lot of issues concerning who's conflicted, who's not conflicted when it comes to superintendent conversation. Mr. DeSanto worked really diligently the past few months to get us a, really a bonus ruling. We were looking for one thing, and we ended up with two. So he's going to explain tonight, and also on our agenda under 10B, we have a little bit of discussion concerning the superintendent and putting an interim in Dr. Grucho's place while she's out, so he will also explain that format as well. Mr. DeSanto, please.
Thank you. The New Jersey School Ethics Commission has issued an opinion concluding that Ms. Acosta and Mr. Medio are not conflicted from participating in employment issues involving the superintendent. Previously, the commission concluded that they were conflicted. We always disagreed with those prior opinions, but we honored those opinions. However, in May, the Board decided, based upon some current opinions, that the time was right to revisit the issue. So the Board authorized me to seek a current opinion. The July 24 opinion concluded, as expected, that Mr. Ulrich, Mr. English, and Mr. Silva are conflicted because of their spouses. So the ruling provided us with Mr. Medio and Ms. Acosta available, but the three of you who have spouses continue to be considered conflicted. So six members can now vote on all issues involving the superintendent: evaluation, contract issues, et cetera. Just for a moment, I want to discuss the doctrine of necessity. We always had that issue to discuss because the doctrine of necessity applies when a statute or code provision requires a majority of the full membership. For example, with our Board, if something requires five out of nine votes, if we had less than five people permitted to vote, we try to invoke the doctrine of necessity. This opinion made it clear, as I would expect it to, that because we have six of us now that could vote, we cannot invoke the doctrine of necessity, because as long as you have five or more voting, you still need five votes, but you can't invoke the doctrine. So the three conflicted will remain conflicted and not able to vote at all. Now, with respect to item 10B on the Board agenda tonight, by state statute, a Board of Education may appoint acting officers. In this particular case, it is clear that the statute allows the Board to designate an acting superintendent due to the absence of our superintendent. The statute doesn't require a policy in place. The statute does not define the period of absence. It's in the discretion of the Board on how long the superintendent is out before you decide to appoint a acting superintendent. The statute is clear that, and I quote, "The act of any person so designated shall in all cases be legal and binding, as if done and performed by the officer for whom the designated person is acting." So in other words, an acting superintendent has the full authority and responsibility to perform the acts of the superintendent as if the superintendent were here. Now, it obviously would be a great idea if the acting superintendent keeps the superintendent informed of business of the district, but does not need to consult with the superintendent or get permission on matters that the acting superintendent is involved Bootstrapping the ethics opinion that I referred to, since the three conflicted Board members cannot be involved in any way in any discussion or vote on the superintendent, that carries through to any discussion or vote on an acting superintendent. Not quite at the same impact, but I firmly believe that the three of you should not participate tonight in item 10B or, of course, vote on item 10B. That motion should be brought forward by one of the six non-conflicting members. So if anyone has any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Mr. DeSanto, at this time, what I would like to do is, I understand it, Mr. Ulrich, Mr. Silva, myself, we are not part of the discussion.
Or vote.
Or vote. So I would ask that Mr. Sabrana chair that motion.
Yes, you can appoint him to temporarily act as the chair for that particular matter.
Yes, okay. So when it comes, we'll address that accordingly. All right. Thank you, Mr. DeSanto. Do we have any committee reports at this time?
The Policy and Personnel Committee met on July 31st here at the Board Office present. Were myself, Mr. Sabrana, Mr. English, Dr. Rossi, one of our labor attorneys, Nicole Curio, our Business Minister, Ms. Merkley, John Frangipani, Cedric Holmes. During the course of that meeting, we had discussion, vast negotiations, and an update with our attorney present, discussion of realignment of supervisors due to reduction in staff, and shifting around workloads and salary adjustments. Mr. Farinaccio presented his reasoning and logic behind the moves. Discussion of Vineland High School administration. Our principal, Mr. Di Marchi, was present for that, requesting the budgeted amount of assistant principals to be filled during the year. Some discussions regarding coverage at Cunningham and our Johnstone AMSA program, and the principal also requested a full-time nurse at Johnstone in our AMSA program. Currently, the high school has three full-time nurses. Dr. Rossi presented recommended hires for the August 7th meeting, which are on your agenda tonight, and reviewed current staff placements and possible layoffs as a result of our approval of our layoff plan and our previous budget. Minor revisions with some job descriptions were also discussed. Discussion of an acting garage supervisor, and some of the progress being made in the Transportation Department. Discussion of some stipends for district employees and shared payroll services that we do with, is it CC Tech?
Mm-hmm.
CC Tech. Some organizational chart, real discussions, policy for use of facilities presented by RBA, and changes of a bylaw, 168 regarding recording of Board meetings, and essentially for the Board members. That did away with the active transcript that would be transcribed by a physical person and retain the recordings as per archive and retention policies in the state. And that concluded our meeting. It was a long meeting, and the power went out when we were here. So we need to get a full-source generator, Paul, you know, scoped out, you know, probably natural gas and, you know, everything, because the other building had backup power because of the infrastructure with the City of Island and our radio system. So it was an interesting night, to say the least. Good discussion.
Do we have any other committee reports? Yes, Ms. Acosta.
The Policy and Personnel Subcommittee met on August, I'm sorry, July 15th, 2019. Present were Mr. English, Mr. Sabrana, Mr. Frye, and myself. At that meeting, we discussed class rank. I think we went over some of the reasons why previously we made the recommendation to eliminate class rank, and some of the positives that have come out of it since eliminating the class rank. We also discussed the HBI pre-apprenticeship certificate training. We discussed in detail the AMSA cost analysis presentation, which hopefully soon will be presented to the entire Board, as well as survey questions that will be included in the presentation. And finally, we discussed the inviting to, with regards to the broadcasting curriculum, having Mr. Medio participate in that Subcommittee, which is being chaired by Mr. Sabrana. If you have any questions, please let me know. The curriculum summary will be posted on the website.
And just for the record, she did say Policy Personnel, but it's Curriculum.
I'm sorry, Curriculum.
That's okay. No worries.
I know.
Do we have anyone else this evening with a committee report? Just a reminder to my committee chairs, as soon as you can get that posted on the website, that definitely helps, or if you need help from someone in the district, they can get it on there for you as well, so we can keep Ms. Marko happy in the public, which is always a good thing.
I have one thing. I wasn't here the last meeting, but did you touch base with the superintendent eval that it is complete?
I'm not part of the superintendent evaluation there, so if you want
I, I'm not part of the superintendent evaluation there, so if you want to touch on that a little bit, you can right now. No problem.
So last month, it was on the last possible day, I believe it was like May 30th, we submitted, the superintendent eval, myself, Nick, Cedric, and John Sobrana were on the committee. So it is submitted. We reviewed it with Dr. Grucci. Everything went great. We created goals, and I believe, does it get posted? Does it get posted on the website? No?
It doesn't get posted on the website, but if board members like to review it, they can. Non-conflicted board members can do so.
Okay. So it was completed and submitted this year?
I do want to take a moment to thank everyone, because the process is not as easy it looks when you look at the forms and you read your school board pamphlet. It takes time, and it is a little bit of a pressure cooker when it comes down to it. But I thanked the four that were involved, and next year, it'll be a six-person process, which is a thing of beauty, and we get a true majority, which appreciates.
You mentioned May 30th. Was it June? I think it was.
Was it May 30th or June 30th?
Yes.
Correction, it was June 30th.
Yes, and we had the deadline of July 1.
Right.
Hey, it got done, so that's the bottom line. It's progress.
Got done.
Absolutely. Do we have any other committee reports this evening? Just to touch base on just a couple other things real quick. Mr. Olrich, we had discussed the Safety and Security Ad-Hoc Committee, and we are working with each other. Our schedules have been kind of hectic this summer, and trying to find an available date. I think we, our goal is to try and meet the end of August, and with the recent tragedy, as I spoke about earlier, the old theory that it won't happen here is just not good for this Board of Education anymore. So I do think now more than ever is a time to aggressively attack this as Captain, still Captain Olrich, as Mr. Olrich has stated. So we will be meeting and keeping the public abreast on that, and as well as the broadcasting. We did meet for an inaugural meeting to just go through some of the ground rules of what the program is and what the expectations are. So we will be meeting again with that and start taking some steps in the right direction, because it was a really enlightening meeting for me, being back on the board after being away for two years. There's definitely a solid succession plan that's been in place since 2015. Now, it's just a matter of tightening it up, working on the finance piece of it, and getting it where it was, and continuing to put the best product forward. And then the final thing I have.
Scott.
Yes.
Speaking, all the board members on the Subcommittee on our safety and technology piece of it, they've all confirmed that the third week in August, probably around 5:00 is going to be a good time for our BA and the responsible parts.
I wanted to remind you, Mr. English, that under the sunshine law, matters of a security plan can be discussed in executive session, so that if there comes a point at which the committee wants to brief the full board, that should be done in executive session for obvious security reasons. So there'll be that opportunity for the full board to have the information that the four-member committee is having.
Okay, thank you on that. And then the final thing, as Ms. Costa said, we did touch base a little bit on the class rank and the kind of the pros and cons, and I got a good history lesson on that. I liked some of the things I heard and other things I didn't quite like. But one thing that was said by Mr. Fry was to go back to the way it was at the snap of the finger is not what's best for students for this current upcoming year, due to the fact of classes being picked and a different thought process in where how it used to be versus how it is now. By no means is the discussion over. I've taken some time to digest and do a little bit of homework on things that I think we might be able to revisit, and again, with that timeframe, I did have some people approach me in the public and say, "Well, is it going to happen?" That takes board vote to make things like that happen, but it would put our students at a disadvantage at this point after the discussion we had in committee. So I just want that to be known, that this is something that we will continue to discuss, and if indeed it is the thought or the feeling of the board to bring it back, then we will aggressively make sure we have something going with discussion in September, October, November, so before ever, of course, selections or different things set out there, we will address it accordingly.
Agreed.
Agreed? Agreed. Okay, thank you for the committee reports, as I said, and let's see, where are we on this? At this time, public comments. Do we have any public comment on any agenda items only?
I did not receive any yellow sheets.
Okay, before you do, do we have any recommendations or motions or recommendations by our superintendent?
Yes, Mr. English. I would like to recommend for discussion Personnel Item 1.1: Retirements, Resignations, Terminations, Leaves of Absence, Employment and Transfers, Student Hires, Substitute Hires, Extracurricular Activities, Extracurricular Summer Activities.
Do we have any questions or comments? Mr. Medio.
Yes, there's one of these things that I'll be voting no on, and if anybody else is voting no on it, I would use the employee number, because on my list, it's number 16; on another list, it's number 18, and I don't want anybody voting by mistake on a number. So look on your agenda if you're going to vote no on it, and use the ID number for the person.
At this point, Mr. DeSanto, we are able to use the name if we choose to use the name, if that makes it easier for everyone?
That's okay, too.
Yep.
Okay. Kind of piggybacking on where I believe Mr. Medio's gone with this. We've all been on the board long enough to know that one of the, really two of the postings we see constantly in a revolving door are our math and our science teachers. Very tough areas to fill, very tough areas to get the best of the best. When you look at our agenda, I worry, we got preschool to 12th grade here in this district, and when you look at our middle school, that's where you're either going to make or break, I always try and say. Elementary is the foundation, the middle school builds on it, and then high school is the culmination of how hard you retained everything and how you studied. That being said, I'm a little bit nervous with the middle school math in general. I'm going to ask Mr. Fry, and I'm hoping the board agrees with me on this. At the middle school level, if we can get our math supervisor to really dig into that a little bit for me and see why we're losing math teachers, it bothers me when we see math teachers, I hear that math teachers might be getting moved to a different type of curriculum when we're constantly posting for them. It bothers me when I see movement of math teachers that possibly have been in the district a long time with a good career and a good evaluation process behind them, but I see them unfortunately being moved in an area where they're not going to be teaching math anymore. The ultimate goal here is to do what's best for our students, and the way you address that is, you do not have a physical education teacher, I'm using this as a hypothetical, teaching math. You do not have a math teacher teaching physical education. So I would ask that, I know that we are going to have another meeting on the 21st, so I would just, I would like to have an overall update of math in the school district and focus a little bit more on that middle school math piece as well. Last month, the board did approve a transfer, transfer of a math teacher from one school to another school that is in need of two math teachers. Now, we're being asked as a board, and I find it's hard to put my board members in this place, we're asking to transfer that person back to the school where they were asked to be transferred from, and leaves two open positions. Quite frankly, my position and feeling on this is, with math or any subject, when you move people around and it forces you to have to post for positions that are open, I don't think that's what's best for our students at all. So as you vote this evening, I have never told a board member how to vote here, this is why we're here. We are here to fight for what is best for our students, and my feeling is, one of these recommendations tonight is not in the best interest of our students. Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Can we get a clarification on the employee number and the number of the transfers? I'm not interested in, you mentioned any names?
The, it is employee number 11662, 11662.
And that's number 18 on the spreadsheet of transfers, is that correct?
That's number 18 on the spreadsheet, yes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please. Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Yes.
Mr. Medio.
No on 11662, the transfer, yes on everything else.
Mr. Sobrana.
No on 11662, yes on everything else.
Mr. Silva.
No on 11662, yes on everything else.
Ms. Spennelli.
No on 11612, and yes for everything else.
Mr. Olrich.
No on Ms. Jenkins' approval on everything else.
Mr. English. No on 11662, yes on everything else.
The general motion passes, and it fails on the transfer of 11662.
Mr. Fry, just one thing. I had spoke to the members of the team through email concerning this, and I had asked several questions, and I'm still waiting to hear some of those questions, and it really, it has to do with the future of what we want to do here in this district. And I, when I say we have to do better, I mean that, and we need to be better with things like this. So we will be having discussion again on the 21st of April, I believe, so hopefully you can get us some information on that, if you want to share it with the board prior to that, so they can review it, so they don't see it for the first time, that would be appreciated. Okay, and thank you.
Not a problem. Thank you, Ms. English. Next, I'd like to recommend for discussion, under Procedures and Operations, Item 2.2: Approval Regarding the First Reading of the Following Bylaws, Policies, and Regulations. Policy 1110, Organizational Chart, Bylaw 0, 2.1, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, start over.
That's okay.
Next, I would like to recommend for discussion, under Procedures and Operations, Item 2.1: Approval of Trips, Fall Athletic Schedule, Marching Band Competition for the 2020 School Year, and District Travel.
Any questions or comments?
Next, I'd like to recommend for discussion, under Procedures and Operations, Item 2.2: Approval Regarding the First Reading of the Following Bylaws, Policies, and Regulations. Policy 1110, Organizational Chart, Bylaw 0168, Recording Board Meetings, Policy 7510, Use of School Facilities, Regulation 7510, Use of School Facilities.
Any questions or comments? Just a quick comment with the Policy Personnel. Thank you for addressing this, because I know we had a discussion in a rather fast mode there, but everyone seems to be on board, and that was good discussion concerning organizational chart and the rest of the items on here. I'd like to go back to one thing, please. I see that Mr. Bermudez is here this evening, and I want to congratulate and welcome you to the new position of principal of the Sergeant Dominic Pillar Middle School.
Yes, yes, please.
I'm going to be, I didn't prepare anything, but I do want to say to the board, thank you very much. Thank you to central administration for this opportunity. It is absolutely the place that I hope to be able to continue my career, being able to open up Pillar was an absolutely great opportunity, being able to see the school really kind of from the ground up, and to be seen as the person who can really kind of continually lead that school is extremely humbling, and I just appreciate the opportunity very much. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Bermudez.
Next, I'd like to recommend for discussion, under Procedures and Operations, Items 2.3: Approval Regarding the 2019-2020 VHS Senior Educational Trip to Florida from March 25th through March 28th, 2020, which includes the cost of a nurse and excusing all chaperone and student attendance.
Any questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend for approval, Procedures and Operations, Items 2.1 through 2.3.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Yes.
Mr. Medio.
Yes.
Mr. Sobrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva.
Yes.
Ms. Spennelli.
Yes.
Mr. Olrich.
Yes.
Mr. English. Yes. The motion passes. And once again, my glasses aren't as good as they used to be. Mrs. Painter, you are here this evening as well.
I didn't, yeah, thank you, Ms. Painter.
Mrs. Painter, please, congratulations, you are the new principal of our preschool program. I apologize, I didn't see you back there, and thank you, Dr. Rossi. Eyes in the back of his head, that's why he's HR.
I'll be right back.
You're not going to get off that easy. Come to the podium.
I just wanted to say thank you very much for the opportunity. Early childhood is very near and dear to my heart, as I came to Vineland as a kindergarten teacher many, many moons ago. So thank you very much. It's a wonderful program with amazing staff, and I invite all of you to please come visit us at Delago, first chance you get. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Next, I'd like to recommend for discussion, under Buildings and Grounds, Item 3.1: Approval Regarding a Contract with Joya Tucker and Joyce Nuland for the Sale and Purchase of 17 West Lanis Avenue at a Sale Price of $500,000.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend for approval, Buildings and Grounds, Item 3.1.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Yes.
Mr. Medio.
Yes.
Mr. Sobrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva.
Yes.
Ms. Spennelli.
Yes.
Mr. Olrich.
Yes.
Mr. English. Yes. The motion passes. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Yes.
Mr. Medio.
Yes.
Mr. Sobrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva.
Yes.
Ms. Spennelli.
Yes.
Mr. Olrich.
Yes.
Mr. English. Yes. The motion passes. And once again, my glasses aren't as good as they used to be. Mrs. Painter, you are here this evening as well.
I didn't, yeah, thank you, Ms. Painter.
Mrs. Painter, please, congratulations, you are the new principal of our preschool program. I apologize, I didn't see you back there, and thank you, Dr. Rossi. Eyes in the back of his head, that's why he's HR.
You're not going to get off that easy. Come to the podium.
I just wanted to say thank you very much for the opportunity. Early childhood is very near and dear to my heart, as I came to Vineland as a kindergarten teacher many, many moons ago. So thank you very much. It's a wonderful program with amazing staff, and I invite all of you to please come visit us at Delago, first chance you get. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Okay. Next, I'd like to recommend for discussion, under Buildings and Grounds, Item 3.1: Approval Regarding a Contract with Joya Tucker and Joyce Nuland for the Sale and Purchase of 17 West Lanis Avenue at a Sale Price of $500,000.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend for approval, Buildings and Grounds, Item 3.1.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Yes.
Mr. Medio.
Yes.
Mr. Sobrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva.
Yes.
Ms. Spennelli.
Yes.
Mr. Olrich.
Yes.
Mr. English. Yes. The motion passes. And once again, my glasses aren't as good as they used to be.
Non-public textbook aid in the amount of $23,298. Non-public technology aid in the amount of $15,912. Non-public security aid in the amount of $66,300. Non-public nursing aid in the amount of $42,874.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend for discussion under Finance, item 4.6. Approval regarding a resolution which awards contracts to the childcare providers and paid by early childhood program aid funding in accordance with the list on file with the Board Secretary for the 2019-2020 school year in accordance with a form of contract approved by Department of Education.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend for discussion under Finance, item 4.7. Approval regarding a tuition contract between the City of Vineland Board of Education and the Atlantic County Vocational School Board of Education for one student in the total amount of $10,567 at $1,056.70 per month from September 2019 through June 2020.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend for discussion under Finance, item 4.8. Approval regarding the healthcare staffing agreement between the Vineland Board of Education and Epic Health Services Incorporated to provide licensed practical nurses at $45 per hour, registered nurses at $55 per hour, and other health services as listed on Addendum A on an as-needed basis for special education students in a form acceptable by the Board Solicitor and Superintendent for July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend for discussion under Finance, item 4.9. Approval to enter into a 60-month operating lease with Canon Solutions of America Incorporated for the replacement of a single-copier unit at VHS South at a cost of $2,800 per month with each color impression invoiced at .035 cents per unit, and each black-white impression invoiced at .0039 cents per unit, beginning August 1st, 2019, utilizing National IPA and OMNIA Partner, contract number FIR0251-18.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend for discussion under Finance, item 4.10. Approval regarding a lump-sum professional services proposal with Fraylenger Engineering of Bridston in the amount of $43,750 for civil engineering services.
Questions or comments? Yes.
Comment. I'd just like to, again, thank Mr. Merkley for, this is part of the transportation plan, long-term plan, that's going to provide efficiencies for us and provide some better functionality. So, again, you know, along with the school buses, thank you.
I'm going to piggyback on something with 4.9 even, with the copiers, Mr. Merkley, which we're all Canon now, right? And saving some money.
Yeah, that was the last one. We elected not to include it in the first go-around because we had just gotten it, but we thought it to be silly to have 109 of them being serviced by Canon and one of them being serviced by Ricoh, and this 2,800 dollars looks like a lot, but the one that is Ricoh was $3,083, so.
Absolutely, and thank you again for the diligence on that.
I'd like to recommend for discussion under Finance, item 4.11. Approval regarding a professional service contract with Fraylenger Engineering of Bridston, New Jersey for civil engineering services at their established rates provided.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend for discussion under Finance, item 4.12. Approval regarding awarding the following contract for school-based mental health services for the term of August 8th, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, with the option to renew two one-year terms or one two-year term for a maximum of a three-year term. For school-based mental health services, contractor Ascenda Incorporated, formerly Robbins Nest, located at 42 South Chelsea Drive, Glassboro, New Jersey, 08028. Total yearly contract amount of $121,803.63, 84.41 cents per direct service hours.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend for discussion under Finance, item 1.13. Approval regarding awarding the following contract for digital assessments and data analysis for the term of August 8th, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, with an option to renew two one-year terms or one two-year term for a maximum of a three-year term. Digital assessment and data analysis contractor Advanced Assessment Systems Incorporated, or LINKIT, 85th Avenue Suite, 1101, New York, New York, 10011. Total contract amount, $77,741.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend for discussion under Finance, item 4.14. Approval regarding the Vineland Board of Education pursuant of NJSA 18A:18A-22B is rejecting all proposals received for bid number VPS-19-01, student transportation.
Questions or comments? Mr. Alrich?
Comment again to our purchasing director, Mr. Salerno, and Ms. Merkley. Job well done, our future in transportation.
Absolutely, you can.
I just want to make a comment so the public knows what this is. This was, this particular bid happened to be the district preschool routes. The existing provider, non-renewed the routes. We put it out to bid through our Transportation Department. Dee and Mike did an excellent job putting this together. Mr. Salerno put it out to bid, and it ended up coming in $300,000 higher. Well, you just don't absorb $300,000 in a budget where you just cut a bunch of positions and a bunch of money. So, we're electing to bring it in-house, and we believe we can do it cheaper than what the original contract was.
Again, thank you, Mr. Merkley, on that, and to Dee and Mike, you guys are doing an excellent job down there. It's getting nearer that time of year when I know it gets super crazy, because I know it's always crazy, but definitely your time and efforts are showing, and I see we have a good communication environment, communication-type environment working here. So, I just thank you for putting the extra time, because I know it's been stressful with this theory of everyone is doing more with less. So, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Merkley.
I'd like to recommend for discussion under Finance, item 4.15. Approval regarding the following Cumberland County Regional Cooperative Transportation Initiatives: 2019-2020 ESY jointure, 2019-2020 ESY quoted transportation contracts, 2019-2020 ESY addenda.
Any questions or comments?
I would like to recommend for approval, Finance items 4.1 through 4.15.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes, abstain on 4.12.
What number was that?
4.12, abstain, yes on everything else.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli? Mr. Alrich?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Those motion passes. Thank you. Okay, that concludes. At this time, we're on 10B portion of our agenda. This is the proposed items for review or discussion or adoption by board members. At this point, I will be turning this over to Mr. Sabrana, who will entertain the motion, which will need a second, and then a vote.
Seek a motion pursuant to NJSA 18A:16-1.1, appoint Nathan Fry as Acting Superintendent effective August 7, 2019 until the return of Dr. Mary Gruccio to full-time service as Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
Second? Second? Roll call? Question or comments? Seeing none, roll call. Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Bob, the three individuals are conflicted. Do I call their names to abstain? Don't even call their names. Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you.
May I say, welcome to the big leagues, Mr. Hobbs?
Thank you, Mrs. Sabrana.
That's all right, that's, welcome, Mr. Fry, and also a speedy and healthy recovery for our Superintendent, Dr. Gruccio. I'm sorry. Comments on bills that incurred for the month of June 2019? Just a quick question. It says preliminaries, has it always said that, or is that something new? There used to be approval of bills incurred.
Preliminary is usually used in June particularly, because there's normally multiple bills lists as we close the year out.
You got it, buddy. Appreciate it. Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please. Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli? Mr. Alrich?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
That passes. Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm not aware of any emergent items, so we're moving to the opportunity for the public to address the board on any items. Limit five minutes each person. Seeing none. Do we have any old or new business to discuss? Seeing none. At this time, I will take board member remarks. I will start with Mr. Medio to my left.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to congratulate our two new principals and Mr. Fry, and we'll see how the school year starts in another month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Medio. Mr. Sabrana?
Couldn't find my button. Yes, congratulations to the superintendents and also Mr. Fry, all kidding aside, and also wishing Dr. Gruccio a speedy recovery and getting back. I know she doesn't like being out of the district. I'm sure she's on the mend and still would rather be here. The other thing I want to mention is in regard to the events of the last week, like everyone here and all Americans, I'm horrified by what happened, and it seems that there's no safe haven anymore. You can't go to the movies, you can't go to the mall, you can't even go out and have, you know, a bite to eat and a beverage, because, you know, death is always lurking there. Having saved schools is our number-one priority. The whole time I was working, that was the only thing that would trump all other considerations. And we have saved schools. What we want to do is keep them that way, which is why I fully support this ad hoc committee to take a look at what we do, how we do it, and how we can ensure that every child who goes to school in the morning will come home safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sabrana. Mr. Silva?
I'd like to congratulate the two new principals and also Mr. Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. Mr. Fiocchi?
Also just like to congratulate the two new principals, Mr. Fry. I wish everybody the best of luck.
Thank you, Mr. Fiocchi. Ms. Costa?
I'd also like to congratulate the two new principals, Mr. Bermudez. I know that you're going to make an excellent principal. You've been so important to so many students, and I know that this is an opportunity for you to be able to make a huge difference in a lot of kids' lives, so I have a lot of faith in you. And, Mr. Fry, I'm very happy that you are now Acting Superintendent. My prayers and thoughts are with Dr. Gruccio. I'm hoping that she has a very speedy recovery and is able to come back to our district as soon as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Ms. Spinelli?
I also would like to congratulate the two new principals, as well as Acting Superintendent, Mr. Fry. And I also, my day job, you know, I'm the Vice President of Complete Care Health Network, and this week we are celebrating, it's something called National Health Center Week, where we give back to our community. So, from Gloucester, Cumberland, and Cape May County, we have been providing free health care to kids, our migrant farm workers, something that's very dear to me, and I just want to wish everyone a happy National Health Center Week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spinelli. Mr. Alrich?
I'd like to congratulate our two new principals. For Mr. Bermudez, I've heard, you know, really positive things, good things. So, it's nice to have a person that, you know, moved up in the district. You have a great opportunity to make a real impact on kids. There's nothing greater. Ms. Painter, who became the principal of our preschool, I have actually known her for probably about 18 years. One thing I can tell you, and I have this through reliable sources, is that she cares about preschool education like none other. And it was an easy choice when her name came up to be selected as our next principal in our preschool program, so I'd like to congratulate her. With Mr. Fry, it's a duet song with me, Nate. My heart is with Dr. Gruccio, and it's always been there, it will be. I wish her a speedy recovery, but the district is in capable hands. We're losing Mr. Frangipani to retirement, so he can see his grandkids and live life and ride his bicycles and get an electric bicycle or whatever's going to happen. But Mr. Frangipani, you know, he's retiring, so, you know, he would have stepped in, and we don't expect any interruptions in board business. So, Mr. Fry, congratulations, you know, and speedy recovery for Dr. Gruccio. That's all I got tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Alrich. Mr. Fry?
Thank you, Ms. English. First, thank you very much for all your support. We'll do the best we can to hold it down while Dr. Gruccio is away. She'll be back soon. I'd like to also thank, we had a donation this week from Healing Wings Pentecostal Temple for their generous donation of 10 cases of glue sticks to Winslow Elementary School. And also, congratulations to Mr. Bermudez and Mrs. Painter. Thank you very much for all your dedication, Mr. Bermudez. It's my pleasure to assist when Dr. Gruccio is out. Prayers with her.
Thank you, Mr. Fry. I've got to get used to that deep voice a little bit. Couple things, guys. When we set out on this journey back in January when I took the president's spot, the flavor of the board was they really want to discuss a lot more things that are positive, what is great about the Vineland Public School District. And, you know, we started our meeting this evening with a JAG program presentation that really identifies, whether you like it or not, what our demographics truly do dictate here in Cumberland County. To see those numbers the way they are, it's a breath of fresh air, and it's very positive, and it was a pleasure to recognize and honor the two teachers and the program this evening. Mr. Marchy, some more positive stuff. To have a schedule come out to the board of the events for the year in the month of August is outstanding. We can mark our calendars, and unfortunately, what happens, because now you have been the first to do that, we're going to start locking the calendars and other schools won't see us. But thank you for getting that out in a timely fashion, because I do know you are shorthanded where you currently are, and it is definitely appreciated that you were able to get that to the board in such a timely fashion. Thank you for that. As far as our two principals, Mr. Bermudez, I love the hairline, so, you know, it's a thing of beauty, it's what you're going to look like in another 20 years, but realistically, I like to call this kind of the Carl DeLante rule. Carl DeLante was an outstanding administrator, and unfortunately, our district lost him with the dread that he does not have any experience. And now, in a short, maybe five years since he's been gone, it might be a little bit more, I'm not sure, but there's talk of him being the superintendent in the city of Bridston. It is so important that we do our best as board members, as well as the team at Central Administration, to retain our outstanding young administrators. I wish you the best of luck, and it is a breath of fresh air, because there was a time when it was very hard. Demographically, we have a huge Hispanic population, and to have the population that is close to that 50%, 60% range, to have someone to look up to at this level as you, it shows that we are heading in the right direction. So, again, I congratulate you. Ms. Painter, it was real simple, Ms. Spinelli- Ms. Spinelli had her meeting with the preschools back in June and I got to sit in thanks to the invitation and she stepped right in and was answering the questions. One thing you really have to know about it, but it says, oh, that's pretty easy being in charge of a Delago school, it's already got a principal in Jeff Dubois, it runs itself, great teachers, but what you don't know is she's also working with all of our private providers, so it's definitely not an easy task. The knowledge she brings to that, as Mr. Ulrich said, is really second to none. So, we have another person in our district that has worked its way through the ranks and it is a positive thing for our district. Some other quick positives, the sound system tonight, I gave it an A+. We had a good broadcasting discussion and you know what? Hey, we discussed some things and whatever was discussed, we identified some issues and tonight is the perfect example through good committees, good processes, you can have a meeting where you can hear everyone speak. Dr. Gruccio, I wish you, like I said, a speedy and best of luck in your recovery. We all are just a phone call, text message away. We are constantly thinking of you as you face the challenges ahead of you. Mr. Fry, you're more than capable. You sit in the seat, you're here every day. I don't have to sugarcoat it with you. I like to treat it like a business and that is exactly what we have here and I consider it to be business as usual, first thing tomorrow. And then finally, in closing, this is called a newspaper, I know we've got a lot of social media people, but as I got to read the newspaper this morning, the headline was Vineland High School graduate Marilyn Miguel, who starts Harvard University at the end of the month, is hosting a two-day camp to help teens try to achieve their college dreams. That really does say it all because what is our motto, Suzette? Enter to learn, go forth to serve. This is a student that if you know the history, it didn't come easy and the product is, it's working. So, it touches my heart to see someone can make a difference and as board members, this is what you strive to support, month in and month out. So, with that, I wish her the best of luck. I wish all of our students that graduated, best of luck in whatever path they're going because it's college, we've got kids on the football field, we've got kids, it's amazing what's getting ready to happen in their lives, but also kids going to the workforce as well as the military branches. So, realistically, I could talk all night about the good stuff, so when you guys ask me to promote it, I can do that with the best of them. At this time, thank you, I know it's August and everyone would like to be at the beach somewhere or relaxing, but business as usual here. At this time, do I have a motion for adjournment?
It's only 22 seconds over, that was pretty good.
I've been good up till now, man, but it was good stuff tonight.
Talk right through that stop sign, too.
That's it. Do I have a motion?
Oh, is that what that was?
See, this means wrap it up, this means you've got a half a minute, this means stop talking.
Absolutely. At this time, do I have a motion? I had a motion a second.
So moved.
Second. All in favor. Thank you and good night.
I was wondering what that...